Declaration of disposable community interests, please. No? Okay, thank you very much. Now we're going to the floor to the public. It's a 15 minute session. Each minute, each question should get three minutes. Anyone? Mark? It was interesting to listen to the parades talk about home improvement. We started seeing it from over the pond with this new group called the dodgy with exposed home and corruption and the misuse of money that's been happening in government over there. So a whole group here, Mr Mayor. However, talking about corruption, it leads into my question. We're part of a group called the Rapid Response Initiative. And retail at people's houses usually poor people who are in poverty when they're getting bothered by debt collectors. What we did so recently, you know, in far as you should. And when we arrived, there was a debt collector bullying working people and pushing all these paperware on them. The police said, oh, we explained to the police that it is not criminal, it is civil. And in the end, six policemen agreed because it was civil, they couldn't do anything. So that meant that the rapid response could crack on exposing this debt collector. Now, the debt collector, there's two groups of them, one's private and one's called the only revenue partnership, who are unextended Breton council. And these are all private firms pushing shoo paperware. And what they're doing is lying to the police because we're going to tell the police that paperware is not true. The police are not in force with the debt collectors' efforts to get the money. Now, when we've done the investigations, we're finding on that avenue showing Anglia Revenue Partners at a private company. Going back over the years, a lot of their directors have been Breton councillors and they've been members of the Breton Cabinet. Now, I think that's all against the law and principles of my time as a councillor. So what I'd like the councillors to do at every level. Because when I was a Breton councillor, we actually voted to get rid of the unpaid council tax for that year. We actually sold it off the books. Now, what I found out is the councillor says that money and that data to private debt collectors going through the Anglia Revenue Partnership first, which is a private company. So what we're doing is we're threatening the working people of Thetford who haven't got enough money. And the elected councillors seem to be backing these privates who are bullying the people. Councilor and all the councillors, especially the Breton, investigate this for us and call back to us on why elected councillors are backing private debt collectors against the residents.
Can I ask, have you put in an F or Y to Breton to answer that question?
It happened when I was there. I didn't quite comprehend at the time why, but I was part of a vote where the council wrote off that it is unpaid council tax. And when we asked how, why we could do this, Madam Clark, they wouldn't tell us, they wouldn't agree with it. And because they've got the majority, they just pushed it through. We didn't really think anything else about it, but it's coming to the fore again now because we've got all the private debt collectors running around Thetford. Most of the ARP cannot facilitate the payment of the money. Then also somebody even more private from elsewhere than the country. But they come there saying that they are from the council and they are not from the council.
Can I ask?
Thank you. Chancellor Macdonald?
Yes, I'm. Are you going to say that you do not pay any council tax and not pay council tax for a number of years? Would you like to say that on oath before everybody here that you do not pay and have not paid your council tax because we don't have to pay council tax?
So you're interested in my accent? Let me set that. So what's happened is the debt collectors are tearing up people's house. If you've had one shape, yours, they are telling the police that they are from the council and they are not from the council. The councillors sold their debts, their debts are on. So these debt collectors are not acting on people for their council. The council was paying off the, it's wrote the debts off and then sold it on to privates. So why are they saying they're from the council? And how are we going to answer all that from Breton? That's all I'm asking.
That's absolutely sorry.
Well, I think the best bet is to go and send it further away to Breton and see what happens from there and send us any information that you get. Can I also ask you a question? No. I mean, largely, no. I used to ask questions. No, it's better. No, sorry. Okay, that's your three minutes up now. Anyway, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Have we got an answer? Have we got an answer? Yes, ask, send and add all our requests to Breton Council. Freedom of speech. This is a resident. Part of this rapid response. Send that in. So the council will do it on behalf of the residents. I haven't taken advice. I don't do that or not. No. So, are you doing yourself first? So the council will do it, it's not what you said.
What I need to understand, Mark, is if you send me an email and what you're asking me to do, then I can make a decision on once I understand what you're asking me to do. But what I can't do is just guess what you try to ask me to do and send in an F or Y for you. So if you send me an email, I will respond accordingly.
Or do you think you're on the council, allegedly being harassed?
Well, that's. Whether Breton councillors are discussing for this council to have.
And all spoken by the magistrates.
Okay, then thank you very much. No one else? Okay, well, that's on then. That's five to, six, five to nine twenty four to confirm the minutes and the extra ordinary full council being held on the twenty third to twenty. That's a true record. Five thirty? Yep. Anyone again? Okay. Right, five thirty twenty four County Council and Chair and Reps on our bodies. We'll go then to James. James, yeah, sorry, Councillor James, again.
It is my only one of the five. I don't check as well as. But. Don't want to stand the gift to you for. Okay, thank you, Mr Mayor. That's all. So it feels like a little while since I last had the opportunity to provide a report for Thetford Town Council. So much has happened, so apologies if I omit anything in error. And as always, happy to take questions from yourselves and on the annual email and email to everyone. As you may recall from previous reports, part of my responsibilities as Norfolk County Council Cabinet Member is our fantastic county farms estate, which extends to over sixteen thousand acres. It was in this role that I attended the Royal Norfolk Agricultural Association's farming conference earlier this month. And it was a privilege to speak to those involved in the industry, gaining key insights from not just farmers but service and support advisors to our essential agricultural community. Whilst I was there, this year's Rural Business Awards were launched. Please do nominate during the nine award categories, which aim to showcase a wide range of our businesses, community groups and people. Close and date of nomination will be Monday, twenty third of April, and the winners being announced at the Norfolk show in the summer. Much of the conversation recently in County Hall has been around two key topics. Next year's financial budgets, as will yourselves, and the twin topics of devolution and local government reorganisation. I was really pleased to facilitate the attendance for Crackle, who's the Executive Director of Norfolk County Council for Stratfordshire Development at the recent Breton partnership meeting to provide insights into these initiatives. I've got to stress that these are twin topics, but they are two separate ones. And I think the best analogy I can come up with at the moment is it's a bit like the M six and the M six toll road, similar but different. I have said, we're welcome in the positive approach, but the new Thetford Town Council appear to be taking it as to these two opportunities for Norfolk as a whole, with the agenda item later on in this meeting. And I offer my assistance to help ensure that the residents of Thetford are fully informed about what these may mean for them and how the aim of them both is to improve efficiency in service delivery, clarity and responsibility, and better outcomes for our residents and our businesses. However, of a county hall, business as usual continues and Norfolk has launched new RAR programmes as part of its five-year economic blueprint. The one point one million pound Business Growth Fund offers grants between five and fifty thousand, covering up to thirty percent of those project costs. There's also a one point two million pounds Main Smarter Adoption Programme, which will provide grants of up to twenty thousand pounds, funding up to fifty percent of advanced manufacturing and engineering projects. Though these initiatives aim to boost sectors like clean energy, agri-tech and research, whilst unlocking private sector investment. Those ones will be available from April and for more details, there's a Main Smarter Adoption Programme. Positive news, Norfolk Youth Justice Services received an overall rating of good after an inspection by His Majesty's Inspectorate for Probation, describing staff as motivated and creative, going above and beyond to support those children that they work with. The report followed a visit by O S M S S in October, the first in twelve years. The Norfolk Youth Justice Service, a multi-agency partnership hosted within Norfolk County Council's Children's Services, and its aim is to prevent children from offending, help them repair the damage that they caused victims and actually help those young people achieve their potential. The inspection found the governance of Norfolk to be strong, with an experienced independent chair of the management boards was skilled and knowledgeable. The quality of resettlement policy and provision was separately rated as outstanding. I'm sure you'll join me in congratulating the team there. Thank you to all the residents that come along to see me in my counselling surgeries over the last few months. I've raised the footpath surface issues on Earl Street by Donald's Corner with a highways engineer and we should see work resurfacing works there. Apologies in advance for the disruption that that will result. I've traced the painted road markings, the speed roundels for the town. Though we promised as part of the Road Safety Community Fund last year, very mindful, financial year is looming, it needs to happen. As part of being a county councillor, there's a member's highways fund that we can draw on annually for minor things that supports highways provision and has environmental benefits. I'm delighted to present the Norwich Road Residents' Association with some litter pickers and baggies at their meeting last month through that. Additionally, hopefully you've all noticed the drop curbs on the entrance to the marketplace from Gildable Street. Those were also funded at my request and delivered in time for the Remembrance Parade back in November. And there will be further works undertaken to improve the surface of Green Main to get rid of the boggy muddy spots, not great for mums with pushchairs trying to get to and from Tesco's. In response to several meetings for residents regarding the challenges around London's Bridge, I'm exploring a number of options to support both pedestrians and road users relating to signage and will report back once I have further information. And then finally, because you're all fed up with voice already, my next surgery will be in Thetford Library on Saturday, end of March, between ten thirty and eleven thirty. So please do spread the word. Thank you.
Very much, Councillor. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Councillor Peters, please.
Not so much a question, but just an update on the speed roundels that you spoke about. I had a meeting and Chris had a meeting with the Norfolk County Council highways and they've informed us that they should be in on London Road by the end of March because they're in this year's budget. So hopefully we'll see the movement on that in the next couple of weeks because we're looking at hopefully getting across the end of London Road. That's not going to happen this year because the funding hasn't been allocated. The next one, it's already been allocated for the next five next year, but we do hope that that's going to be forthcoming. But the signage and the roundels on London Road are due in in the next couple of weeks. And thank you for that.
If I might just come back, you're absolutely right, it should be by the end of March, but as my husband reminds me, I am a persistent person. I'm not a dad, I am persistent. So I am reminding him, I was thinking that that work does need happening. Following the incident, there is improved signage, councillor Jeremy and myself, Bobby Horst, improved signage around that crossing point in the interim of being able to build a business case and get funding for another crossing there. And there's also conversations about an additional crossing and seeing how we can work with that within the feasibility works that are helping, happening around the LC Whip, the cycling and walking improvement plan. Just remember that. Test goes bearing in my way for development now coming on across the road there. So just keep in mind all of that community across town and from the south. The painted thirty mile an hour rounders will be going across the town. There's a couple of sites on London Road, there's a couple of sites on Norwich Road, couple of, one on Earthway and also on Mumford Road. Just so we can remind and encourage people of what the speed limit is in that area. I hope that helps. Thanks, Vic.
And round of applause? Thank you very much. That's all I can hear. Stand up table now. Stuart?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Landon and I attended the great partnership on behalf of the town council. And as Councillor James has indicated, there was updates on the, with the mayoral situation in Norfolk South, the district councils way forward. There was also a presentation from Boost who are helping to bring people who are not in employment and training or education and they are supported. And as Councillor James was indicated, the phasing of the King's Street was brought forward and the concern raised about the lack of crossing by the Tesco's entrance there. And hopefully that will take on hold. I did raise the next agenda item about provision of sporting facilities in the town because we are under provided by managed recreation space and given the demise of the Hocke Club's pitch, given that six years ago Breton knew about this was going to happen and have done nothing to provide that. But I know we have a later agenda item which we can talk about that on. Thank you.
Councillor Brindle?
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Doyle?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just to talk about the Safer Neighbourhood Action Panel, which occurred in Monford in January, and that looks at the whole of this region, including Thetford. There was quite a good turnout from Thetford residents and that resulted in our points being put forward, in particular, some of the speeding that was highlighted. And we do have a very active and growing community speed watch across the town, which has to be applauded because it really is a thankless and difficult task. Alongside that, we also have the neighbourhood watch, which is growing in size. And hopefully those two things will continue and more of our residents can get involved in such activities. For those who need to, the next Safer Neighbourhood Action Panel, which is run by the police, don't forget, is in this room on Thursday, the tenth of April at six thirty PM. Please be there. If you can encourage others to come, highlight the areas of your concern so that the police can look at those in particular. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Peters?
Councillor Macdonald? I was just going to give a brief update on, because it's quite a significant piece of work on clothe fields on the footpath between Mallow Road and Norwich Road. There's a path that's being reworked and it's all fenced off with these huge eight-foot tall fences. And it's due to be repaired between the ninth and sixteenth of April. So because it's quite a way, I thought that was worth highlighting.
Every time.
Yeah.
As the newly appointed town council rep on the Charlesborough Board, it's been a pleasure to attend a few board meetings now, along with Councillor Brindle. Firstly, congrats to the new centre manager, Nicola Wellam, and the hard work she's already put into the centre. The shop remains very popular, combating food waste and addressing life food poverty we have in the area. Of course, there does remain challenges around the ultimate sustainability of the centre, given increased costs. But the staff and the board, we are working hard to address them to ensure a long-term viable centre of Thetford to continue to use.
Thank you very much. Just Terry? Okay, thank you.
Mate, you said the stag meeting's on the tenth.
That's correct, yes.
All right, Paul. It's got a ten reading.
Yes, that's correct. They're in different rooms.
Can you talk about it?
Lanning.
Ed Hardman. Okay. Right, five three one twenty four, Mayor's Report. It's been a really hectic two and a half months, as you can see, there's some stuff that we've been doing that's not even on the list, like the Pocket Park, Stain Close, which is really incredible piece of work. You know, congratulations to the town team, the town of what they've pushed ahead there. I must admit, one of my pride in, sorry, right, I must admit that after all the long while, I've become incredibly proud that Thetford at last had the Holocaust memorial service. Ever since I became a councillor, I wanted this to be brought in, but the time and time again, and it's now happened. We became nationally famous, it was on, it's on the Holocaust memorial website. And to us, we've done the next year, we hope to make it bigger and better. So, we. Right. Can't do that. Okay. To know the ten part before.
Any questions on my report?
Progress and action from previous meetings? Any questions? Okay then. Five three four twenty four, nominations for the mayoral act for the year twenty twenty five twenty six, to receive nominations for a mayoral act for the next mayoral year. We have any nominations, please?
Councillor Macdonald?
Second this? Any other nominations? All in favour? Anyone again? Exclusions? No? Five, five three five twenty five, twenty four, sorry, nomination for the deputy mayor and eight. I must admit, I really enjoy this one. The received nominations for deputy mayor in twenty twenty five, twenty six mayoral year, any nominations, please?
Nominate Councillor Bond.
Second of the Councillor. Second of the Councillor. Right, do we have any other?
With pleasure, I'd love to nominate Councillor Vic Peters.
Okay, do we have any second for Councillor Peters, please? Councillor Blackwood. Okay, so. Okay. Right, we're going to invite all those in line for Councillor Macdonald, please. Hands. All those in favour of Councillor Peters, raise your hands, please. Doesn't matter.
How many is that?
How many is it? Chair.
Your hand up.
Put your hands up again, please. Sorry, who do you think, please, the councillor? Councillor, please do. Congratulations? And I hope your wife enjoys it.
Thank you very much, everyone, of trying to do the best to support our in the forthcoming. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. But when you leave and when it comes to whether you are not a boss, you two brilliant councillors either way. My first is to go to the bottom, so then give that alteration of who's next to lie my time, so I'm, I'm, I'm glad to lie in my work because maybe somebody will be honest with me and I might have to show something.
Thank you very much. Okay, five three six twenty four, receiving report regarding the purchase of new vehicles. The deputy ten. What it says? I'm only reading it.
Okay. The paper says the top box.
My sister, deputy ten.
A report being issued to Corporate Services in January. And recommendation was made in Corporate Services that the council apply four vehicles. We're incurring significant rental costs at the moment, and this is one of the cost-cutting measures that we're taking to actually apply on four vehicles. So if there's any questions on the paper, happy to answer them.
Good. Okay, does anyone have any questions? Councillor Stewart, I'll gently write.
Thank you for getting it right. And failing you very much, you heard the town park and the town, I feel hard work they've put into his proposal. I say that about everything you guys do, but I don't think the public realise how much time and effort goes into every item that you guys have to work on. I really hope we can support this. Again, we are a council that is committed to saving money. Continuously leasing vehicles is becoming too expensive for this council, and I'm glad that we're making the decision to finally purchase those vehicles instead. My only ask is that we get some good Thetford Town Council branding on them to help promote how much our town team are always out and getting the job done.
Councillor Terry, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mr Mayor. First and foremost, it's essential to recognise that relying on older vans brings significant challenges. Older vehicles are prone to frequent breakdowns and costly repairs. Not only does this create unpredictable disruptions to our services, but it also places a financial burden on our maintenance budget. In contrast, investing in new vehicles promises enhanced reliability and reduced maintenance costs, allowing us to allocate our resources more effectively. Moreover, newer vans are designed with the latest advancements in technology, including improved fuel efficiency and lower emissions. By choosing to replace our aging fleet with modern eco-friendly vehicles, we can significantly reduce our carbon footprint. This aligns with our community's commitment to sustainability and a greener future for all. Investing in newer, greener vehicles is not just an optional operational improvement, it's an environmental responsibility that we must embrace. I'd also propose exploring a strategic commuting beneficial solution, partnering with local businesses to sponsor new vehicles. Many local businesses may be keen to support community initiatives and would welcome the opportunity to contribute to our cause. By forming such partnerships, we can alleviate the financial burden of acquiring new vehicles while fostering stronger ties with our local businesses, our local business communities. This approach not only showcases our collaborative spirit, but also highlights our dedication to enhancing locally economic growth. I want to assure you, I want to assure you all that I fully understand the financial implications and challenges associated with investing in new vehicles. I recognise that budget constraints and financial prudence are critical considerations, and that is why I believe that collaborative approach involving local businesses can help us navigate these challenges effectively, ensuring that we make a sound investment without compromising our financial stability. However, I recognise the importance of making a well-informed decision, especially when it involves significant investments. Therefore, I've chosen to abstain against this proposal on the matter today. This decision is not taken lightly. It stems from a commitment to conduct a thorough research and ensure that we make the best possible choice for our community. I believe with, with a bit more time and investigation, we can find the optimal solution that balances reliability, sustainability and financial prudence.
Good. Okay, Councillor Jensen?
Yeah, thanks, Matt. We're just going to say thanks as well for this proposal, contrast to Councillor Terry. I actually am, I'm very pleased with purchasing our vehicles. I think that's a really sound investment. As someone who I think in Corporate Services has moaned a couple of times about the cost that higher purchases are, are taking, I'm really pleased we're doing that. I'm also particularly delighted that we are, we're suggesting we will put in money continuously for a fund going forward, that we are in a strong position in the future when we do need to re-purchase vehicles. So I'm very happy to see this on, on the paper and want to just thank you that it's gone into it.
Councillor Peters?
Jim. I, I like this because it is, look at it, cost effectiveness. I do agree with Stuart, if we can get partnership, it would be a good thing. But we are going to visit this in two or three years and, and that gives more scope to, to look into them sort of thing. So maybe we could look at it for the next round of vehicle purchases.
Anyone else?
Yes, I'm doing response. We did design that we would look at sponsorship, but it's not a quick win. I have sent an email, I thought she'd come. As the Terry sent to me, to a company of colleagues, since they haven't responded to that yet, but as soon as they do, then we will hopefully get that deal put in place if they want to offer deals. And with regards to exit vehicles or newer vehicles, what we've got to do in three years' time, we've got to look at this again. Where we're really more replaced, we can afford these kind of vehicles and have the infrastructure in place to be able to provide to into disability so that we can then give them the power that they should need.
Good, councillor Brinkley.
Just a quick comment from the benefit of the public. I know we've already had a decision, but it's just to let you guys know that this was discussed extensively. Obviously, for vehicles, there's quite a cost to it, to the council, but considering the amount of work the council teams do with the with the grounds and the green areas and everything, it all was on flow. And it was indeed a big difference in costs between leasing them and purchasing them. So it is a big saving in their respect.
Very much. Anyone else? Any recommendations? Can we have a proposal, a recommendation, please? All those in favour? Anyone against, any extensions? Councillor Terry.
It's another one here.
Oh, sorry, that's a red dot. Five three seven twenty four, fire risk assessment, and it says deputy town clerk again, but not necessarily.
Thank you. What we've done is, we had a significant fire survey done to this building in 2023. Those who came in, we went out and got the initially, we got tenders to have all that work addressed. The tenders came back significant amounts of money. So we've appointed a project manager to manage this project for us internally. The project manager has done all the drawings, has had a look at the at the work. And essentially, what we've had to decide to do is to go out and tender totality and then ask them to do a tender. Go to the particulars, the service providers, and then once that process has happened, we will then run through those tenders and then start scheduling the work, setting it down so that we can actually do it within our financial capacity. That really is a significant amount of money, a hundred and fifty thousand pounds is what we estimate. The tenants may even be higher or lower than that, but it is something that we have to address. The paper sets up a risk compliance. We had a great opportunity for the councillors to engage with the our service providers and our project managers. So there was a question and answer session that happened sometime last week, and council's present, we're able to get some clarification of the thing. But in essence, we just need to start moving towards addressing some of these big issues. And the purpose of this paper is to start that particular process, without the need of the council to spend any money at the moment.
Any comment? Councillor.
Thank you. Three for three now. And I'm quite disheartened and incredibly shocked to learn that as a result of years and years of previous, just to clarify, previous failures from former councillors and staff that we're now saddled with a potentially extensive bill in order to ensure the guilt on the Carnegie of Fire Safety Adequate. As I said earlier, I would like to thank the town clerk and deputy town clerk again for the hard work on this and the expertise that they've sought to ensure we have up to date fire safety guidance. And I know we have to act soon in order to become safety compliant. We have a duty of care to the staff that work in those buildings to make sure our buildings are up to regulation. And I request that we focus on identifying what is a recommendation or what is a requirement. I mentioned that when we had the the meeting. And this allows us to perform any emergency work and then look at recommendations until later date. And I also asked what work can be performed in house, staff, rather than having to look at paying specialised contractors to come in and provide the work. And finally, I also asked those doing the assessment shouldn't be the ones who we necessarily go with. And for transparency reasons alone, I have slight concerns the idea of people who provide us with the the regulations and the assessments then being the ones awarded the contract. And so if we could get the broadest sweep of answers, of tenders as possible, that would be great. Thank you.
Councillor Blackburn.
I would just echo completely what Matt said here about a number of years, quite a few years of neglect. I really would like some kind of investigation to go on to find out why this work is coming on all at once rather than over a ten or fifteen year period. We should not have been landed with this. I really would like to find out why this has happened, please.
Perspective. Councillor Brindle. Councillor Brindle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the board, we've got item five, which given non-compliance, and the fifth bullet point refers to insurance. Can this raise a further issue? There are two suggestions there as to what what difficulties will be caused if we don't be non-compliant in terms of insurance, but there's a third and it's a potentially disastrous one. That is, that we take out insurance and then there was a fire and then the insurers pay, play, so they're not paying a penny for what has happened because we weren't compliant. That could happen. That is a real possibility. Insurance companies are very tight these days. They're looking for reasons not to give money away. That's a good one. So we must absolutely must be compliant.
The reason is that councillor Brindle, that is something of a course book. With regards to previous reports, we can, we have looked into it. We can only find one from twenty twenty one. And that wasn't brought to council and it had very similar highlighted issues and nothing was done about it by council or the previous in common.
Twenty twenty one.
Yes, and before that, there was no further fire study on this.
Can that be minuted?
Right, second, second. Councillor Brinkley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't into where one. Um, one of the things that I'm clear with, as you can say, if it didn't go to the councils and we are now in a crisis. This is my second landing. I never heard about any pressing issues or emergency issues with fire risks or any safety things within the buildings on the council that require detection. When I was here until this point, it was discussed. So all of this was used to me and I assume I would have been the only one that this was used to. And some portion was not dealt with before. We can't look backwards. And we must get like in council like once and looking at what fails and improve in the future. Our fix was behind, we can certainly try to fix it now and council is not going to be right. It is an insurance failure. It should, and it is as an issue for anybody who's a consultant, this needs to be addressed despite the amount of money in our house. And I am aware it's not a small amount, dear. It is what it is. Thank you.
First one.
Thank you, Colin. Thanks, Councillor's point. I think it's it's useful to try and highlight those ones we need to do now. Yeah, the note writers on the risk assessment, they are flagged in red and green, they need to do. Taking councillor Vanham's point over the years, we have had inspections, we have had advisory works to be done. And declaring an interest, I am chairman of Dance Army Museum and I have been asked to be present when those fire inspection people have been ranked. And some of those items there are still not being done. And so I accept that as a from a council perspective, we haven't done some of those things. Some of those things in house we suggested could be done, but they start, that's not been agreed up to do that. But some of the things like the partitions in the Carnegie, well, you know, that's a building rig type thing where we, you know, the fire is through there. Really ought to have been addressed by those going at the works of the time. So I think rather than call everybody on calls, there's been a lot of failures over the years. And I just think going forward, we need to get, as councillor Brindle said, those immediate ones, get those dealt with. And then we'll have to see whether we find the money to do the rest.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I would just like to say, I think that possibly the agenda we had on progress on that from previous meetings would stop this happening again. So we're not, it's not good, is it? There we are. Okay. So no need to recommend, really, officer, recommendations. They're on the board at the bottom. Can you see? We're dropping it, read them out. Right, councillor Professor, please. Councillor McDonald, councillor Peters, second of all those in favour?
Thank you very much. Five three eight twenty four. It's already been mentioned by councillor Wright about Thetford Hockey Club. It's with a great sense of shame that I've seen the Brecklands yet again ridden brush off of the Thetford Sporting Facilities. We've lost eleven football bridges, basketball courts, tennis courts, central, all in the name of money. All is for all, not just the big football people who put the money in, these services must be for everyone. It's unfortunate that it's taken six, they're threatened over six years about this coming up. Even worse, they told us that when we asked a question at Breckland on last Thursday, the work is going to start early March. We asked if they could postpone it so the hockey club could finish their season. And the answer back was they would receive a financial penalty from the Football Association. I'm not a hockey player, not particularly big hockey fan, but I do agree with it. It's said sport, we need people to go out to be able to play, it's good for their mental health. Myself, councillor Terry, and Jeremy and Lee, ladies with the hockey club in Cloverfield Church, and the amount of feeling, emotion and stories we heard from the hockey players, their mental health, physical health, et cetera, et cetera, was really touching and heartfelt. And I think that, I don't know what as a town council we could do, but I would really hope that we could support Thetford Hockey Club in going forward. The idea of them moving to Watten is horrendous. The pitch at Watten is dangerous. It is not fit for purpose. There are other stories that they might be going to two or three other sites in the town, but Breckland have said they have a range of site for them. They haven't told us where it is, have they? No, no, I mean, okay, but in my opinion, it's dire and it's really threatened the written brush shot over the longstanding Thetford Sporting Club. We shouldn't accept it when there's been tests, Terry.
I can't really disclose the two sites that they got in mind. Breckland have identified potential sites for the club, but honestly, they've been long drawn out legal process and cost effective. It's also worth pointing out that Breckland have earmarked seven hundred thousand pounds for the refurbishment of the multi-use games area in Watten. And which work will hopefully start sooner rather than later so that the hockey clubs can play on a decent surface. It is frustrating. Like you said, Chris, the town can't lose another sports club. But I suppose football is the big, the big winner. And I think like councillor Ashby said on Thursday, that they will get penalties if they don't start work on the third, but I believe the chairman, one of the hockey clubbers wrote a letter to the Football Association to see if they would just sort hold back until mid-March so they can fulfil the fixtures.
Okay, councillor Wright.
Thank you. I'm pleased we have this gotten in the agenda because we thought about it. Six years ago, Breckland knew that they wanted to resurface that and make it a football only service. But it fell away. And they well did, they were nuts. What they haven't done morally has let itself down because they knew this. Why on earth they didn't start work early, as I understand from the recent meeting, which I've been copied into the minutes of. The Breckland were not too supportive of the hockey club and basically said the hockey club have got to find their own money and find a way forward. I was interested to read in the press today that they have earmarked a site, or they may have earmarked a site, but I suspect those sites, the two in mind that I understand, probably not Breckland have earmarked it, it's been others who are willing to try and help have put those forward. And I think, you know, the Breckland councillors who sit around this table, I think are very sympathetic to the hockey club's plight. But the Breckland councillors who sit at the air and the Breckland officers, I think, really need to be called to account because this is unacceptable. We've got a hockey club that has been gone for forty years. And we've got youngsters there who have been lost to hockey because they won't be able to travel to Watten. And the uncertainty is inside there. A number of the juniors from the game has fallen out. And it's such a shame that some that could have been, you know, as the mayor has said, we've lost other sporting provision and managed recreation space in there, but it has gone downhill. It's a growing town, we should be able to find more facilities, not less, you know, this whole Sue extra housing was sold to us many years ago, the extra facilities coming on board. And it's been let out, you know, we haven't even got enough cemetery provision, I don't know whether they're dressed fine, we've addressed that man, but, you know, we've been sold a pub there. And we do need to try and get this further up the agenda and save the great hardship. That's all I can do is ask for an agenda. It doesn't mean anything's going to happen. It just means that they'll take on board our criticism. I think we need to build a little bit more momentum to get them to look again and provide financing for it. The legal side will take time, whatever sign you do, unless you've got a wind field site, which potentially the Sue development could provide, but the other two sides will take time to be delivered. But I think we need to get some movement on this.
Well, great. Councillor Terry.
Can I just add to what I said, that Breckland have, they will, any cost incurred by the hockey club for travel, et cetera, Breckland will pay up.
Yes, that's reputation. Councillor Brinkley.
While in the orange, my question is for all of them, because it's going to be extremely difficult with hockey club to find another location. As Mr. Wright mentioned, a few others. So for all of them is on the table, because that hesitation they need to move point in, point in, see. But in the work box, they will need to pay for that travel, that is a negative loss. So I, without optimism at all, I don't see our way to a council because they have no term. And there's the biggest finding a lot of alternative location. This test definitely don't have a solution. The poor resolution is no solution at all. They still need to play, but they're going to fix that basis of that and have your be grateful to continue. They've been here for forty years. I don't want to be all hockey. I don't even watch hockey, to be honest. One thing I know is that there's three components that they're also built, this is from ground up. And that's going to be no, no, it is good and music, it's arts and the sports. You take away one of those developments by deleting them in a town and soon enough you find yourself to have all those problems than the ones that you started with. It's imperative for the youth and it's imperative for us working to stay healthy and communicate and engage socially. I won't worry any more opportunities in sport than councillor Wright mentioned, not taking them over. Whether there's money, whether there's value, whether there's something wrong. I don't care about the sport. It's not about the sport itself. It's about the principle. You know, there's kind of the options for all types of people that are losing interest. You know, if people want to do, you know, they want to support, they want to support, the party let them, it doesn't matter. At the end of the day, we have to provide enough facility, they say, no, if they, the other club will be filling others because of the person, they will be filling them as a gamble and as a community.
Okay, councillor Peters.
Okay, one of the things I brought up a year ago was that we could facilitate this council. And I think we should look at possibly doing that, not us, but we facilitate it, set it up, and then it acts independently of the council. Because I think that that would be the best move forward for Thetford, that we would be able to support all minority sport. We did say that we was going to do it, but we never did. Can we look at possibly going down that avenue again, please?
Yeah, I'm all for that. Okay, I would like to recommend that the town council gives what support it can to Thetford Hockey Club. Do I have a second, councillor, please? All those in favour? Thank you very much. Five, three, nine, twenty four. Unitary, your mic used to there, your mic. Off again. Okay, sorry, five, three, nine, twenty four. Unitary and devolution to recover. Receive a report regarding unitary devolution while a central government is setting up a new council to work in the town plot. The devolution.
Have you heard that in your next call? And is there any questions before we make a decision on a greater council that can go forward to help us represent ourselves with the unitary and the current councils and different councils?
No questions, okay. Okay, so the group of action group of councillors that discussed the unitary and devolution process, all those in favour? Sorry, a leader proposal, a second proposal, councillor, councillor, second, all those in favour? Thank you very much.
And we just asked, are those councillors that are interested, email me and I'll say, we mean, you know.
Five, four, oh, twenty four. For go over the component to receive the report on additional work needed to capulate to safeguard the buildings' long-term integrity.
I've come to any council meetings to talk about this and we've always been continually optimistic that we will eventually turn in the corner and we will soon have it completed. It has been a nightmare for us to project manager. I think just, we started off, we put scaffolding up just for the benefit of the councillors. We were told that the parliament actually could possibly call it to the bone, or call it to the market screen. We brought all these to get that sort done. We've had to call land to so many different bodies, Heritage Architects, Structural Engineers, Storage England. And we just at the stage where every time we get a little bit of optimism, we actually end up being, having the wind taken out of ourselves. I attended a meeting quite recently, they had done a lot more investment work on the capola. They have to replace the column and replace a support. And all we're doing is they have to put up more scaffolding to be able to do that, to take the extra load while they can, they can hold the capola in, stopping falling through. So we just, we originally had a budget of about a hundred thousand for this. We're now sitting at hundreds, coming up to a hundred and sixty thousand pounds. It is actually quite, quite distressing. I hate it when those meetings come because all, all I see is, is pounds aren't going to the door. What we, what, we had a latest quote, we have a project manager that's been managing it since April. Once this extra work is done, hopefully they'll be able to finish the capola. February was supposed to be a date, it's now slipped out to April, but have the, that will be the last of it. So this is what we're asking, to this report, is for extra funds to complete the capola and ensure that it's, that it's fit for purpose for a long period of time. Because one of the comments I'd like to make is when we sit in these working groups, is that we have to make decisions as to do we take short-term decisions or do we take medium-term decisions? Where the officers get asked, well, if we can replace this, it'll ensure that scaffolding doesn't go up for the next twenty years. Or if we don't replace it, there's a risk that scaffolding could be going up in the next five years again. So we have taken a little bit of a medium to long-term view to all the work. Because we'd hate to see scaffolding go up again five times a year because we've taken a little bit of shortcut. So we put a period of fifteen to twenty years as our time that officers would re-advice the project manager and all the various.
Councillor Fingers?
Like the earlier agenda, once again, we're having to commit large sums of money to cover up for stuff that, and to get work done, that has been kicked down the road by previous councils. And I think that we should put on reference that we're not happy about, but we are going to have to do something about it. We are where we are. We need to spend the money to, to get these things done. It's members of the public that we're looking at safety wise. But it's just disappointing that all these costs could have been done before. And it's just kicked down the road to balance their budgets. And we've done very well in trying to keep budgets low. But this doesn't help matters at all.
Councillor Beckmore?
Yeah, on this one, I think you've done a fantastic job. I really do. Lots of work only come to light when restoration work has been undertaken. So it's virtually impossible to have seen what has gone on. I just hope that this time, however much you need, it can be put forward and done properly. So it is a medium to long-term solution and it gets dealt with. And I really applaud the amount of work you've had to put into it. It's been brilliant. Thank you.
Councillor Gibson?
Yeah, thanks. I'll just echo what's been said. I personally think as a, as a councillor, I would like us to make sure that future councillors don't have to deal with issues that we've left hanging. So I'm very pleased to go to say we're looking at medium and long term. I think that's really important. I'm very grateful for the work that's gone into it. It's obviously been incredibly frustrating. And I know constantly asked about it and then received similar answers and it's incredibly frustrating as well. Just implores well with the project managers, if we can do everything we can to get this down as soon as possible. We've got a very big year. I think we, previous councillors, I hope the whole town would love to see the goal of all as it should be, not with scaffolding. So if we can just continue to press as much as we can to get this done as quickly as possible.
I think the disappointment is a bit evident in the room. Deputy Town Clerk feels just as disappointed as the rest of us do. And I just think for the benefit of the public and recording, the black and white of this is if we don't actually do this, it may fall down. So we, we don't have a choice. We can be as annoyed and as angry as we all want to be and we all are. It will fall down. It would be catastrophic to the building and potentially to life. We're going to have to do it. It's a shame, but.
Councillor Wright?
Thank you. But I think, again, I'm not defending earlier councils because I think because Peter started it off, we've kicked the can down the road to keep budgets low. And we should have had managed maintenance, just up there. Windows in this building on the south side there, you know, they need desperate painting. I know it's not a structural issue in the way the capola is. However, if we don't get these managed situations, we're going to have massive costs ahead of us if we don't keep up top things.
I totally agree. And what we're going to do going forward is set up earmarks, earmark service for maintenance of buildings so that future councils don't have this issue of having to find fifty nine thousand pounds. We will have budgeted for it in future years of the years.
Okay, the recommendation is to council to approve the extra cost of restoration, he's helping us. Councillor Beckmore?
Just proposed.
Anyone against? Thank you very much. Five, five, four, one, twenty four, car parking. It seems important regarding negotiation of ownership of car parks within the town.
As you know, we did have a report where Breckland earlier in last year were coming to make all of the car parks pay for. We recently made in a press report that that's not going to happen now to interview. They have asked us whether we would like to take over all or some of the car parks and to get into negotiations with them. And just for information alone, the rates alone, the car parks that, and they come the seventy six thousand pounds with the restoration costs of fixing up the car parks. This is a considerable decision to make for council. You guys, for any questions?
Councillor Stur?
Yeah, I was very pleased to see that the, we cannot even say in council, because pretty sure the word they use is postponed or something like that. They've pushed it back, which isn't a huge sigh of relief to everyone. But credit to the hard work of the council, the councillors, the Breckland councillors and for the consistent arguing of this matter. So I'm really glad it has been at least postponed. And I'm more than happy to enter into negotiations with them. I think I'm much of a part of the answer, going to be tearing in, if it is, I apologise. I think we need to, as an immediate, look at certain car parks like we want above anything else. And I don't want to steal too much of what I know councillor Terry is going to speak on. But I think we need to at the start, when we enter negotiations, look at getting it for free, to be honest. I mean, seventy six is a per car park, you would love to get it.
No, that's for the, I think that's fourteen on, so that would be all of the car parks. You pay per space.
That's a tiny bit better than that, I guess. And what I think we should be looking at negotiating for the, at least a few of them free because of the benefit we will have as a town, specifically we're looking at White Hart Street, what we have as standing fourth trust and to the council. And but I'm happy to, yourself lead on that, but I think we need, more than happy to go into negotiations with them. But I think they're expecting quite a lot, to be honest, from us.
Happy to enter negotiations, but I really would like to know significantly more about the running costs of the bar. Because the maintenance costs on those are terrific. If you want to keep them free, then we're going to have to take on the maintenance costs. Looking at the recommendation, we've got to pick one of these this evening. And listening to the voices around, I think we'll agree. We don't really know enough about the cost is, what we need to do with maintenance. And we don't know how much support we're going to get from Breckland if and when they disappear or whatever. And Norfolk County Council, if that's the authority we've got, we don't really know yet. So we've got four options and my personal preference is to engage in further negotiations. So we actually find out exactly what financial support, the implications and the operation would be. And if we can to take them all and still run them free, I think that's the offer we should look for. But bear in mind, financial costs, we may not be able to do that. But with more negotiations, we have a better idea of exactly what we can afford and can't afford.
Thank you. Firstly, I think it's absolute travesty that Breckland have spent fifty seven thousand pounds on the consultation. It's appalling. That's taxpayers' money. But I'd like to think your town council will consider the car park location on White Hart Street on the basis that it's close to the heritage sites like the Priory, the Ancient House Museum and Charles Borough Museum. And also taking ownership of White Hart Street Car Park aligns with our, the council's commitment to supporting local heritage. And it's also worth pointing out that the, we own St Peter's Church, King's House and the King's Gardens. And the whole area is the focus of our heritage lottery bid. So I think the White Hart Street Car Park would be great. Of course, if all the car parks on White Hart Street are free and the others, then it would be very viable for us to look at most of them.
Adding on to, can we look at some sort of amalgamation between option four and three? To engage in further negotiations for specific car parks? Rather than engaging in negotiations just in general, can we look at engaging in further negotiations with the aim of looking at specific car parks? Mainly, as priority, let me go from that.
I think what they want to do is get an idea which car parks, not just one car park. And when six months down the road, we decide to have three more car parks. And what we have to realise is that every car park that we take on might increase the budget next year and therefore increase the preset, if you're wishing for these to be three top ups.
Okay, thank you.
Interesting. Having gone through Breckland divesting itself of the toilets and play areas many years ago. We had a commuting sub given to us to take those on. It was not sufficient to, you know, carry on the works, the, the play areas were very poor condition. We really struggled to bring those up to standard with the amount of money that was on offer. Similarly, the toilets, Breckland said they didn't have to keep toilets going. It's up to us, we either took them on or they were closed and the council at the time, rightly so, I believe, you know, took those on so that we do have some convenient conveniences. This is a little bit different. We are suddenly even the taking on a further liability that we have to go in with open eyes to understand the costs associated with it. The, the business rights alone is going to put your preset up. The maintenance of the car parks themselves are, I think when we had the marketplace done, it was about thirty thousand pounds before we would get gifted that across. So the, the costs of putting the maintenance in is something that we need to bear in mind. And over a certain timescale, because some of them will be in better condition than others or require immediate. So I think the only thing we can really do at this stage is to engage in further negotiation, gather more information so that we are able to make a correct decision. But if we as a council wish to offer free parking, there will be a cost in the preset to our residents.
Thank you. Councillor Gibson?
Thanks. I, yeah, I think we were all potentially scarred by what's happened with Breckland in terms of thinking, yes, we want to take ownership of car parks and to give them free, that personally I think are priority. But there are additional costs. I think, I think I'm conscious of is this is happening in the background of the previous item you just talked about on the agenda in terms of change to the structure of government. And what that will do to who owns those car parks, to what happens as a result of them. So as a result, it feels like there's a fair amount of uncertainty because if we end up in a situation where we essentially take on more of those car parks, maybe we might have more influence as part of the devolution than, sorry, not devolution, but local governing restructuring. So I only believe in sort of trying to be proactive, for going with our eyes open. So to that, for me, it's about, yes, entering some further negotiations, we can get more idea of the cost. But also being aware that actually there's going to be potentially more opportunity down the line as well to, to see that for me.
Oh, I'll come back to you. Sorry, sorry, Mike. I think I've heard some very good points and I think the point made by councillor Wright. With Breckland only gives us things or power over things for which there is no income. No income for children's play areas. And we have to face the fact that nothing good has ever come from that direction. I think that if I was a betting man, I would take good odds that in three years' time we will control the car parks and be charging for them. The only alternative to that would be to persuade the public at a public consultation that there's a better way of doing it. And the majority, and those who don't use cars themselves might well not want it on tax, for example. So I think we're stuck in a horrible position. We have little power over Breckland. Breckland will do nothing, spend no money in its, in its last year or two of existence. So we'll get poor quality car parks handed to us when Breckland disappears. I do think there's a lot of merit in what another councillor, I think it was councillor Terry, suggested in that we might like to take over one, propose to take over one car park, perhaps the one you suggested, Well Street, immediately, so that we get some experience of running car parks and begin to see what the problems are before we're faced with running all of them and the public clamouring to get good car parks at no cost. So really difficult situation. Yes, we should negotiate, but I think we can be positive about taking over one car park at this stage.
park at this stage.
Thanks, White Hart. Thank you, Don Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with councillor Jefferson. Actually, this is as much to do with the unitary change as anything else. Let's not fall ourselves into thinking that Breckland have decided that the people have got the power and they've decided to fall in line with it and actually allow somebody else to run it. It's gone into the too difficult pot while the unitary decision's being made. And because of that, another easy way of doing it is throwing it at us. So I do think this is a very, very difficult position. We're all massively opposed, sorry, to charges. We know what that'll do to the town. However, if we take on the car parks, we're going to be left with a bill we can't pay. And so we would be in a situation where possibly we would be the ones then looking at asking people to pay for car parks, the worst of all situations. So I think the only option really is to engage in further negotiations in the first place to find out what the size of the ask is. I agree with councillor Terry in that, you know, that, that would make more sense in the location that it is. However, until we know the whole size of it, I think we're, we're, we're trying to build in catalysts that aren't suited. And finally, the fact that whenever we've taken anything on in the past, there has been money that goes with it to support that and there is no mention of that in here is really concerning. Drive around some of the car parks and look at the state of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With my discussion so far with Breckland, they have said there is no money to take over the car park. And I need to make that to myself. And they have said that they have done up all of the car parks in the past five years and conditions are good. Should have been almost good, but they stayed there.
Thank you. There's going to be other points? Sorry, councillor.
That's all right. Yeah, I think previous couple of councils made good points. Very colourful, by the way. For the first time to people, as if we're kind of put our foot down with something, we shall not pay for a car parking because it doesn't suit our business needs and the dignity and what they do, or something you can have. There's a car parks, the council, the council, and that is a big cost. My concern is that we, I don't necessarily be totally with picking one car park, for example, initially, like I said, the terrace, as Terry said. However, I'm concerned that if we take one or two, it's a thing with Breckland. Of course, of course, the public will recognise the shop, but we never want, there's also what the bill is going to pay. The public may be that, well, saying, okay, so why are shops are in favor of a certain location where people won't pay back to give it to stop, or have those jobs, the gas and everything, and that, so in making that decision, there will always be people, you know, who's in trenches and businesses, they will complain that they're English, it's been left behind, you know, there's a problem that I understand there is a fragment, and it's more central and so on, for, for, for the sake of the businesses, which is some of the, there is the biggest element that we're waiting on the fact that we all read that Tesla should not charge in a car parking because the business will die out. There will be an issue with locations. I think that's one of the problems we're going to navigate. And we don't think we're going to have to make the budgets. And because the money is, because the company's increased, so the bottom is no longer.
Just to let you know that if we were to take on just one car park, as you say, down the unitary process, the rest of the car parks might either go to the new unit of council who will decide to charge and ours will be free, or they may sell them off to private company who will charge. If an ours will be free, then we might have the issue with everyone trying to get into one car park as it's free. Just be mindful of that. That's a lot to think about.
It's not an easy position, is it?
No.
My first opinion of what it's worth, that we should engage in further negotiations. Our option four, to see where we go. I do have some sympathy with taking over a car park, but I'm really concerned as to what's going to happen two years down the road when Northern take over, et cetera, et cetera. What will they, what will they do with our car parks? Will we have any choice? Who's going to be legally enforcing the laws in any car parks? You know, it's, it's a thing, we think it's a fair amount of work. I think it's something we have got to look into, but be very careful of what we wish for. Sorry.
Yeah, I think I'd like to recommend that we do have fully costed, those have come back as once you've gathered the information, because there are very much same seventy-six thousand rates, but we need some assumptions in terms of servicing, ongoing maintenance so that we can really take advantage. If we've got ten pounds properties in the town and you look at a hundred pounds a pound, you suddenly look at ten pound per property on your council tax to cover that. And I think we need to be mindful of that.
Yeah, this is right. I mean, I'm sorry. Regarding when the devolution comes in, though, I don't know how the PFI arranged things or what. It's like the centre, it bothers me. Okay. Can we have a recommendation for number four, please? All those in favour?
Is there any councillors that would like to join me in the negotiations? I'd like to, like one other councillor, just so that we can make sure and cover all.
I'd be too.
Or two, yeah, one or two.
If we need a sub, something, that's up to you. If you want to be a sub, and then go check into the car parks if they can, anyone can do it. Okay. Okay. You all have, yeah, all done. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. See you in your meeting.